Well, since everybody's, any objections to the minutes added or deletions of October 16th? Motion to approve the minute?
I have a question on them.
Okay.
I didn't understand if the draft, are the fees set? Or is that still, it sounded like it's still a question.
Where are we?
Where are we? Where the red part? That didn't come out on my paper?
Oh, no, minutes from last.
Wait, good minutes, not me.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were on the wrong.
Minutes for you.
Sorry.
A second?
Where's the, where's the?
I second.
You said, Polly said the first.
Okay.
Yeah, second. Date of next meeting, 12/11. Is that okay with everybody? Doesn't interfere with Christmas, it's too early. George, any correspondence?
Nothing particularly directed to the trustees. We are in receipt of the MBLC letter notifying us formally of the first batch of the state aid, but we'll talk about that in my director's report.
Okay.
And then we did receive a letter from a lawyer's office. We talked about it briefly a couple of hours ago, but we had a $25,000 donation from a estate of a library supporter who passed, so we received that as well, deposited into the account.
Now, what kind of, how is that set up?
It's just a direct donation. No restrictions, no stipulations.
All right, director's report.
Do you want to do it the way what Polly said last time?
Yeah.
So we would need a motion to accept the director's report and then a second, and then I'll talk about it.
Okay. Motion to accept the director's report?
I second.
Second. Same. Discussion. Very good.
Syncing my screens.
You can make that bigger, right?
Yeah. Hold on. There we go.
Everybody see that?
I second.
Lost my mouse. Okay. This is a little bit of an experiment, so we'll see how this goes. I was really happy with the circulation number we had. So 78, 44 is the pre-extra number. So as of right now, we did get the last batch of numbers in. I think it put it up to about 81 or 82. I can't remember off the top of my head. So right now, we are still on track to hit 100,000 circulation for the year. Bonnie and I are actually talking about putting one of those thermostat fundraiser things up on the board in the hall and try and get everybody else in on it, because I want to break that number this year.
Excellent idea.
Yeah, that's fine.
And for order for us to hit it, we have to stay above 83, 62 or something like that each month. So July was a really good month for us because of all the out-of-town folks. We were at 93, so right now we're running off that average, but we're bleeding the surplus.
So we have two months.
Are we doing a fiscal year?
Well, our calendar year, our fiscal year, yeah. So I go July to June.
Okay, so we have more, we have until June.
Yeah. No, I don't use.
I asked the same thing.
Yeah. Bonnie was actually making fun of me, because in my head, I don't think calendar year for anything. It does not exist to me. Like, you know, January to December.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter. I only now, I've been doing this for too long, so I only think fiscal years now, so...
Is that June 1? Is that June 1 to, to?
It's July 1 to June 30. So in my head, that's the calendar year. So even my home budget that I have for our family runs July to June now, especially because that's how we get our pay raises, so it makes more sense.
Did you like a New Year's celebration in July, or?
There is much alcohol.
So we have plenty of time to reach that.
Yeah, and that's the thing. So right now, our average, right now, we're 20 items over because of the dip, because the average is going down. So hopefully with the thermostat, we'll get the whole town on board and we'll go from there.
Now, what does that comprise?
That's everything.
Checkouts?
Yep, that's checkouts, and I include digital checkouts with that, because to me, they're the same thing. I don't like to separate them.
Is it only checkouts from this library?
It's only our checkouts, yes. But it's also people from other towns who check out with us.
But it's not sales?
But if we get a book from another library, that doesn't count?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
So if other people have books sent here to pick up, that counts. So that's total checkouts. That's our books.
How about if we go somewhere else to get a book?
That does not count.
It does not count.
The way that the system hoopla counts. I count it. You know, this is us in-house, this isn't the Boston numbers. Boston counts numbers different than I do, because I, you know, they're weird. But, so basically, that number you have in front of you is all of the physical books that are checked out from this building, including by Westport residents and out-of-town folks who come to our building, as well as all of our digital items through us, totally.
So if we were 500 numbers short in the end of June, we could all go into the library six days a week and take out 10 books each, and that could get us up there?
If you want to.
Do you have to take something out, or can you just come in?
You have to.
Oh, I'm counting checkouts if you wanted to, but yeah.
Are you only counting, you're not, you're not counting present?
If you bring it up to the counter and scan it and check the book out, and then put it right back on the table, I mean, I'll do it.
That's like the war council, if you keep doing this.
Yeah, don't do that, that's my data. Don't, that's not my data.
All right, very good, George.
So that's something we're going to be working on. The one that broke my heart, and I was in a funk for a day, I'm not going to lie. Our registered patron count took a big hit, and I actually emailed sales, because it was such a big month-over-month drop, that I wanted them to double-check to see if something got messed up on the backend, and it didn't. Apparently, what happened was there was a batch of about 300, 400 people, 370-something, whose library memberships were extended during COVID to run until September 30th, 2020. And then that just expired. So those expand, those people who had had the extended library cards because of COVID got deleted out of the computer. So it dropped from 5,000, which we'd been fighting really hard to try to get to with registrations, down to 46, 77, which hurt.
How do you figure that out?
Well, that's one of the things, it's some of them, it's people that moved away, it's people that didn't make it through COVID. It's not people that stayed local, because you can't have more than one library card in the sales network. So these are people that either have completely stopped using libraries altogether, have moved out of Bristol County, or are no longer on this mortal coil, as it were.
Is there a way to get a list of who those people are?
No, because the accounts were deleted, because of inactivity, so they're just...
Is there a way to look at who's going to be deleted, like, next month? I'm just wondering if there's a way to contact any of those people.
We are, and that's the thing. So anybody who is about to have their card deleted, they get emails and text messages, depending on how their account is set up.
Okay.
But we constantly have people who are renewing their library accounts. So these are people that completely had been inactive for at least four years.
But that should not happen regularly. That was just that they had that one-time extension because of COVID.
And that was the thing. So these were people who already had been inactive.
Yeah.
And during COVID, their accounts were to be deleted because of inactivity.
Yeah.
But they got an extra three years because COVID pushed that out.
Right.
But this is a one-time hit, it's not going to happen again.
Correct. So as of right now, as far as we can tell, all of the big drop hits have now hit. So there shouldn't be any more bubbles in our number. And then I'll show you on the third page what I kind of went back to look at as we go through.
Didn't we take the pledge maybe a year or so ago, each of us on the board, that we'd bring in five new patrons?
Yes, we did.
And that was the cool thing. So I went back and I actually pulled a report for myself, and since I started, we have issued 1,500 new library cards.
Wow.
So I was really, excuse me, to be exact, 1,525. Which means that, you know, so other, yeah, so out of that 46, 77 we have right now, 1,500 of it, it's just since July of '21.
Do kids automatically get library cards through the school department?
Not automatically. Typically, what will happen is we'll have like a second grade, third grade, fifth grade class come through, and we'll make sure, the teachers will send home applications, the parents will fill them out, they'll bring them back to the library, and then we'll go through and make sure all the kids in the class either already have library cards, or any kid that doesn't will be issued a library card, except for there's a couple of kids every now and then who the parents don't want them to have their own.
And what's the youngest age you can get a library card at?
Five. Unless the board wanted to change that, that's what we've been going with. Some towns have no minimum age, and then parents can come in at like, you know, three days old and get them their own card.
Okay, any other topics to discuss on the director's report?
Just for everybody's fun, if you look in the email, on the third page, I went back, and, we don't normally do this, but because of the depression I was into, because of the drop in the registered patron count, I pulled a year-over-year report, and I wanted to look at what the numbers were October to October to October. And it was really cool to see the actual progress we've been making. October is a good bellwether month for me, because it's, you know, after the summer rush, after the back-to-school crash. So basically, every October for the last three years, our door count has gone up 1,000, and our circulation's gone up 1,000. So that was kind of...
Books to sit and read, staying indoors.
Yeah, and that was the thing. So it's a good month to kind of see how we're doing overall from year over year to year. Yeah. Any other questions? Anybody has?
Volunteers and hours.
Yep.
Eight volunteers, 36 hours?
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming that's what that means.
That is correct. Total, between all eight of them.
Do some work more than others, or is it just the average?
Oh, no, that's the true count. I mean, I think I rounded it up, because it's...
No, I mean, do you have a couple that work like eight or something, and the rest work less?
We have most that work anywhere from two, the average is usually about two hours a week, give or take. Some do more, some do less. A couple only do like two hours a month. Ned Daniels, for example. Basically, he just does coordinating the display case.
Okay. Bonnie?
Which of my going to be?
I'm going, I'm going.
Thank you. Okay. Halloween touch-a-truck went fabulously. I was very excited. We had, over 200 people came, which was absolutely amazing. I could not believe it. It was super fun. It was that last really gorgeous day we had in October, so we definitely want to do that again. The police and fire department were really happy with the amount of people that came.
I heard people talking about it, they liked it, yeah?
Yeah.
It was so much fun.
I was very impressed with the fire department's truck.
They were.
They went into it hard. Very impressive.
They didn't mess around. They brought their teen volunteers, I think it's the explorers group, and they were helping direct traffic, and they were, they were great. Polly's grandson was one of them, so. I have finished shifting books in the children's area, finally. I can't stop moving them, I don't know what's wrong. And I'm working on labeling each section now, so I have nonfiction and the picture books done, and I'm getting really good feedback as to being able to find things, especially from the staff.
Yes. It is very important to say, the staff have been very appreciative of Bonnie's efforts, and it actually is making it easier for us to find books for people. So we have to applaud her as well on our side, as well as the public appreciating it too.
So that's probably about a third of the way done at this point. We added our entire Who Is section, those are, I don't know if you've ever seen them, there's a whole series, they're little books, they have cartoon characters on them, and the kids really enjoy them. So we got, I think, it's about 160 books at this point, it's basically the whole series. And we had done a major reading of, I think, last year, of the biography section, so this was sort of filling in kind of the older books that we'd gotten rid of.
Although, even though you said cartoons, are those, is it biography?
Oh, yeah, no, they're true stories, they just have cute covers on them. I went to bring one in.
Carriage.
Carriage.
Can't say that word, yeah.
Excellent little books.
Yeah.
They're great.
What age group is it for?
Elementary, school into...
Elementary, middle.
Yeah.
It's probably like...
I enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're like, okay.
Well, the funny thing is, there's a lot of adults, there's a science to it, because a lot of, you know, nonfiction books are really good summaries, really good introductions to things.
Yeah.
What's his name? The guy who ran up that big tally on Jeopardy a couple of years ago?
The guy that's...
James Holthaus.
Yeah, James Holthaus. His whole thing was, he would go to the public library, and he would just read children's books.
The, um...
Yes, that guy.
Yeah. And that's what he did to like get that wide and...
There's a lot of really fantastic ones there.
That was his...
You get a really good basis.
So, there's something to it. I read them too, if there's something I don't know, I've never heard of this person.
Right, and I know a little bit, right? And if you like it, you can go find out more.
Exactly.
Like the later life of Helen Keller. Oh, and there's a lot there that I didn't know.
Cool. Friends update, any more, anything else, Bonnie? I'm sorry.
That was it, just about the story times. I'm thinking of changing Tuesday's story time, because I'm not getting, I get like one person every once in a while, but it's not great, so there's nothing that says I have to do a traditional story time, so we're going to work on that.
Very good.
Fine.
Friends update?
Well, I sent it by, yeah, by email, so...
Any questions?
I had gone there thinking that they were going to be discussing replacing Sue Burns, but George informed me that Sue will be replaced at the January meeting. They'll have a discussion if they want to continue doing the book sale, as they've been doing at the series of sales, the paperback, and then the full sale. They want to do it in a different format. I haven't heard any discussion of your idea, but I think you have heard some background talk about it.
I think they're planning on keeping the book sale going in some form at this point, in terms of how that changes or not, I'm not sure that they are sure yet. I think they wanted to kind of honor Sue first, and then kind of move from that point forward.
Yeah.
Now, which Sue is leaving the, the book sale with?
Sue Sekay, who is former, now she's Sue.
Sue Burns.
Burns. She's come there. Congratulations.
Not the former librarian.
No.
No, Sue Breko was the president of FOWL, and she gave a beautiful speech about Sue Burns and the contribution she made, I think. She said Sue earned the library through the book sales, 68,000, or earned the friends, 68,000 over five years that she was running the book sales.
That's gross, too. That's after expenses, so it's very impressive what she's done with it, organizing it. You know, people don't realize it, but every time they do one of those book sales, there's about, I think, 50 or 60 volunteers that are arranged and coordinated between manning the sale, setting up the sale, sorting the books, loading and unloading the pod, I mean, it's a lot.
Is she willing to share her tips and things, or?
She is planning on setting up a new procedure, so whoever steps forward will not have to reinvent the wheel, but can follow what she's done and modify it if they need to, but they thought that would be a great idea for their events in general, just having set procedures.
Right, and a guidebook.
A guidebook, right, so any volunteer could step in and do it. So it was really nice, and we all finished with coffee and cake, and Sue was there.
Well, I just wanted to give support, because I know they wanted more involvement from the trustees.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they are appreciative when we show our faces.
We should mention, Representative Schmidt came by too, so that was...
Oh, that was big.
That was nice.
He's really, he goes to everything. I don't know how he finds the time. When is the legislative breakfast, by the way?
Yes, we are going to be hosting the southeastern Massachusetts Legislative Breakfast the first Friday in March. So Mr. Schmidt had been asking for us to have it down here, and obviously, we're literally the end of the state, so it took us a little bit of time to convince everyone that enough other people would want to come down here. But last year, Somerset was the most-attended legislative breakfast they've ever had. So they're like, well, if Somerset had that big of attendance, why not Westport?
You're going to have it here?
Yes. So we're going to be having it here the first Friday in March. It's going to be probably like 8:00 AM start time. Obviously, everyone here will be invited, and we'll be extending invitations also to the select board due to, you know, the density of politicians that will be invited to the day. And all the state senate and state representative members are invited to attend, so...
Now, you always talked about when you go to these things, the breakfast is terrible, so what do you have?
They're not terrible, they're just...
More to your liking?
Well, to me, it's like if you have a breakfast, you got to have like, you know, I won't say like eggs and bacon and sausage or something, you know, but it's always continental, so it's like you got, you know, fruit and bran muffins and like whatever. It's like last year, I have to give it to it, Representative Schmidt actually donated the spread at last year's breakfast, and we were very beneficial, benefited of that and thankful. And we did have some protein, because there was cream cheese for the bagels. So as far as I'm concerned, that's a win, and I'll take what I can get, and I won't look a gift hoarded in the mouth if somebody donates.
You think they should give him a little persuasion to do it again this year?
We'll see. I mean, he's going to be basically the, considered the sponsor of the event, since it's in his home district. So being the farmer that he is, I might give him a nudge, and between him and Sue's Craig, to see if we can get us some sausage or something. So, Westport being the farm town that it is, I think the second that I put out the call that we have, you know, out-of-town folk coming in to showcase Westport's spread, I expect food to just show up on my doorstep. But we shall see.
Okay, we'll move on. Trustee subcommittees. Safety, we'll go first, the display case.
Very good. I don't have anything on the board for that one, so we'll put it right there on the white blank screen. So right now, we're working on researching and replacing shelving and the mounting arms and the mant, or the, what do they call it? Ellis. Display case due to...
That's the sole one right behind you.
Yeah.
No, I mean...
On the other side of the wall.
Sorry.
So we have all of the displays inside the main library, we have, you know, people exhibiting different collections or art, things like that. Every now and then, we lose one of the shelves, they'll just, you know, get dropped, and we've been working through a supply of extras we had in the back. This happens from time to time. The last time, we had one break, we were out of extra shelves, so Ned Daniels actually donated a shelf from the glass place. It went, and he had one custom cut.
Did he feel guilty because he broke it?
No, he didn't, it was, I forget, somebody else did.
Okay.
But he took it upon himself to do so. And then, the last two, three weeks ago, Dan had helped Bonnie's mom take her display out, and then he noticed that one of the shelves was a little smudged, so he was trying to clean it, and the wobble caused the shelf to come down, which took out two other shelves, and then we were down three shelves.
These are all glass shelves.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe we could replace them with...
That's the plan. So right now, we're looking at replacing all of the shelves inside of the display case with Plexiglas, and I am currently trying to locate better arm brackets. I had found a online company that makes some that are heavier-duty metal and can lock into a slot bracket, but I was looking at them, and they act, they don't actually have a hook on the end of the arm, they're just completely straight. So I was talking with Nancy Mullin, one of our library assistants, and she used to work at Lowe's, and Lowe's does custom Plexiglas cutting, and she says they have a bunch of different arm brackets for sale there. So once we have time this week, I'm going to run over there and see what they have on the shelf before I start ordering stuff online to just try it out in the display case. And then we'll go from there. The plan right now is to have that set up and ready to go with the new equipment, hopefully, probably after Thanksgiving, because the next display is due to be installed on, I think it's November 27th or something like that. So we'll wait until everything that's in there right now gets taken out, and then put those in and go forward. And then my plan going forward is we're going to change the display case. In the past, the practice has been, basically it was set up so that there were these half-shelves, and then it was up to whoever was exhibiting in the display case to move them, however they wanted to, to exhibit their collection, and I'm done with that. So we're just going to get two or three Plexiglas sheets, the width of the case, and just have them where they are, and if somebody needs to have something moved because of something that's being exhibited, the staff's going to do it. But the intention is to not move it unless it absolutely has to, as opposed to moving them every single month to fit whatever's in there better. And then we'll go forward from there.
Good. We don't need someone getting hurt.
Right, that does limit what you can display if they're stationary shelves.
Yes.
Yeah, if you can take a shelf out.
Yeah, if we needed to, we could take one completely out, just have, you know, whatever is taller, be on the, whatever the topmost shelf is, or take a bottom one out and have it on the bottom, be tall. So there's still variety, we can still mix and match it. Honestly, in the last, geez, we're going on three years, last two and a half years I've been here, there's only one display that actually needed to have that height, and that was a display of Legos, which was fantastic. But I mean, even then, if you had just tipped that one on the side, it could have still worked, it just wouldn't have been as cool, because it wouldn't have had the launch pad. But we could play with it if we needed to. It's just more of just the intention of, if we needed to move it, we can, but the chances of something going wrong, or something being tipped over goes up higher every time we do the shelves.
Right, yeah.
So that's that.
Next item, emergency response policy. This was George, Sue Costa and myself worked on this. It's a lot to go through. I mean, I wanted to send it out so everybody could look at it, maybe talk about it next month. There's a lot of stuff in here, but it was really taken from the Mass Board of Library Trustees. It's a template they have, we just kind of went in and changed things to fit us. Took some things out that didn't apply, but if anyone wants to look at it next month, we can talk about it.
So you'll send it to us?
It was in the packet.
Oh, it was in it?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of pages.
Yeah, it's really, I have to say, I was really impressed with it once I went through it page by page. Hopefully, you know, hopefully none of it we'll ever need, but other than the chemical, biological, or radiological contamination, you know, every single other thing on the list, I have known libraries where it has happened, so it's good to have it on paper so that we can at least think of, and then with the staff, we can be prepared, you know, what happens if, you know, somebody does call in a threat? What happens if this happens? What happens if that happens?
Again, if having a procedure in place, without having to think about what?
It helps, and that's the thing, so I think it's a really good idea. And hopefully, we'll never need it, but it's like, you know, what Don was saying, it's better to be prepared.
And we're open for comments, because George had one about the meeting place, he doesn't like it out by the flagpole, it's too close to the building. He thinks it should be elsewhere, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why we got to look at it.
Other than that, I thought it was, it's great. That was the only, the only thing I always think, when I went, read through it, the only thing I wanted to tweak was, if we're having like a fire or an incident here at the library, originally, the point of meeting was, you know, near the flagpole in the parking lot, originally the point of meeting was, you know, near the flagpole in the parking lot. It's just, it's too close.
Too close. If you think about it, you're right.
Thank you.
I would imagine if any event you had here, the high school would go into their emergency mode too, most likely. They're pretty close.
Probably, yeah. Depending on the thing, you know, one would, one would hope.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's something else we could think about is how do we get the communication from there to here? If they got a bomb threat or they got a...
They probably would have a threat before.
Yeah, and that's the thing. So right now, it's the point of contact is through the police station, so. We'll see.
Just another thing to think about.
Definitely.
All right, long-range planning.
That's a big one.
I've looked it over. I, I think it's excellent. We talked, we talked about it last time. Um, I think it's very good.
And it's been reviewed by George. George, who in the staff worked with you on it? Did you?
Um, pretty much everybody's worked on a piece of it at least once or twice, but obviously Bonnie and I spent the most time on it together. Um, but would, you know, as we were going through it, we talked different parts of it through with the others, rest of the staff too. So as far as I know, everybody has been talked to at least once about different aspects of it.
I think it's a great road map for the next few years.
So we had talked about it before. We brought it up for, for the approval of the board.
Yeah.
Any, uh, motions?
Is it appropriate for me to move to approve it since I worked on it?
I move to approve it.
There you go. Second?
I'll second it. I wasn't part of it too. Another one. But I really didn't read the whole thing, so I feel badly sucking it. Whoops, that's on tape.
Good job, you guys. Good job.
So next we will, there'll be one final amendment to the long-range plan. And I'll just stick a little note on there saying that it was approved by the Board of Library Trustees at the November thirteenth meeting. And I'll send her up to Boston.
Will that be put on the website?
The library site or the town or both?
The town is the library's.
No, you're on your own.
That is ours.
Yeah, you have to...
Oh, you have to click on there to get to here?
And the town stuff still says it's a town.
So we actually have, depending on what you think of it, it's our website.
Yeah.
The sales website is not our website.
Okay.
So our website is the town website. I'm like, losing my voice today, jeez. Sorry. But yeah. So sales has landing pages for all of the, no, it's okay, thank you. Um, for all of the different libraries in sales, but that's not our website. I don't have any control to change anything on there. Whenever we need to tweak anything, I have to send it to sales and ask them to fix it and then hope for the best.
Yeah, and I brought to the town, went to the library, and I just assumed. I just, I didn't think of that first step.
No, it's okay.
New business, library trustee training discussion. Laura went to the training.
Yeah, I did it online.
Um, I read through what she gave to hear though. I think it's excellent.
They have tons of information. I think George passed along quite a bit.
Yeah, this is what I had, but, you know, I, I had a couple of questions. I don't know where they're at now, but one of them was the insurance, and I talked to Jim. We are all covered under the town's policy. So no one's gonna sue us for making a bad decision. That was one of the questions I had.
I had a question, which I think I know the answer to because the presenter was talking about a separate attorney to advise the Board of Trustees apart from the town in case there's ever a conflict. And I, I'm sure we don't have one. And we don't have anything in our budget. So we rely on the town council when we need to.
Yeah.
And I've gotta spare one of these if anyone needs.
Hold on, one second.
Thank you.
Technology.
I don't know, I don't know how that typically works. We could just use the town. We'd have to go through somebody, of course, I'm sure.
You probably, if you needed to. So we had something like that happen in Wareham, uh, before I came on board, but I read through all of the minutes and everything. Basically, your choices would be either to expend, um, non-municipal library funds or, um, kick into the kitty yourselves as individuals. Or, um, you'd have to try to get the insurer to, um, pay any ways against the town. If something like that happened, which would be a huge mess.
Just for an opinion or something?
For an opinion, if you needed a legal opinion.
Yeah, so in that case, we'd have to ask the, uh, town administrator for permission to ask the town council for an evaluation and an opinion. Because basically anytime, because it's all billable hours and it goes against the town's legal budget, um, it has to go through the town administrator. Which I do have that form if we ever needed to, um, submit a request.
So payment would be through the town's question, not the library budget?
They might ask us how we're paying for it.
Yeah, and that's the thing. So the town might say, you know, this isn't in our budget, uh, where is it coming from? And then that would be a determination to make at that point.
Would we have any funds available that we could use if we had to?
If we had to, but then it would be taken away from something else.
I know, I know.
Obviously. And, you know, it's at the discretion of the board how we spend any of our money really. So I mean, between the state aid and, you know, our general donation account, we could, but, you know, it's, it goes fast when you get legal advice.
It would be interesting to find out if any other, quote, departments have had to have an attorney and who paid for it. Like at Council on Aging, if they have to have one.
I don't think, as far as I know, they don't.
No, I mean, if any other town has had to use an attorney, how was that handled?
Well, it...
And paid for.
Yeah, normally it's from within the town's own budget. So the, the only time that it would be a question normally for an individual department to pay for it is if something happened in which it was, you know, like for example, if the, you know, back in the day, if the trustees had wanted to, uh, retain a separate council during the school development process, something like that. Um, but that would be such a mess. I would not recommend doing it because then it's, you know, us versus the town and it would not be a good thing.
No. Okay, well anyhow, I just thought we should all look through it. We'll be up time.
Yep.
Just with you on your own.
And I think we pa, I can't remember. I think we passed those out back in March or April, um, the Trustee's Pocket Guide. Um, so the training that Laura went to was United for Libraries, which is like a national organization. Um, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, every year has that same kind of training specifically for Massachusetts, um, trustees. So we highly recommend, um, getting involved, getting on that email list and signing up for one of their trainings. Uh, we did email out to everybody the small packet, which is the trustee pocket guide, as well as the super duper big one, which I have not read all the way through because it's like a hundred and twenty pages. Um, there's a lot of information in there you don't need because there's actually like three or four different flavors of library trustees in Massachusetts. Uh, so some of it doesn't apply to us, but it's definitely good to be aware of.
Because of our size.
Our size and our style. So basically, there's different structures to library trustees, whether or not you're elected, whether or not you're appointed, whether or not you're a nonprofit or a part of the town. So as elected policy and, um, trustee boards here, you guys have the most power and authority out of any of the different kinds of boards other than a nonprofit board. Uh, which obviously they're basically unrestricted in terms of what they do and how they can do it. A town elected board is only restrictions are Massachusetts general law and town charters or town bylaws. So it's good times.
Okay. Reimbursement, um, Director reimbursement request for professional membership. That's, we've already talked about that, right? We told you to go ahead and put it in?
There was some of that. I wanna make sure we're all on the same page. So it'll be, um, one sixty-two for the American Library Association, eighty-five for the Public Library Administration, Admin Association, excuse me, and one twenty-five for the Massachusetts Library Association. So it's three seventy-two total. Between the three.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Very good, George. Gotta keep you up on top of things.
Especially I've been out of the ALA for a year, so we're gonna see what they've been up to while I've been away.
Okay, the next one is the meeting room policy. I don't know if anybody has any comments or suggestions on it.
Well, I didn't understand, um, what it meant for Westport Recreation. Because I didn't understand if they would have a fee or they would not have a fee because they're part of the town.
I didn't do it for any particular organization. I just tried to put a policy together that we could use.
But reading the policy, I thought, well, what, what, what does it mean? Because I really am advocating for Westport Recreation.
I know, I know. Well, I know George had a few comments, like almost two pages, so.
Just a couple.
Yeah, well, there's a lot that he brings up that I didn't think about. And I think the whole thing about the charging, I mean, that's, we either have to decide whether we want to put it in.
That was my question. Currently, who, who's in there right now?
That is a bridge club.
And is there a fee to it as well?
No.
We don't charge a fee to anybody right now.
There's no fee whatsoever.
So currently, the way that it works is there are no fees that are charged, and there are no fees that can be charged. So in order to use the meeting room space, you have to be a community nonprofit or community group that charges no admission and assesses no cost for using the space.
Okay, so from that description to what it, what exists now, do you get many requests from others that you have to say no to because?
We get some. We get some. Um, one of the biggest ones I've been getting lately is we're having a lot of lawyers as well who are looking for meeting spaces with their clients.
Ask them to be the lawyer for here.
We could. That is true. That is true. Um, but yeah. And we have other events where it's like, like, for example, two weeks ago, I accidentally breached the policy without knowing, get ahead of time because the planning board reserved the meeting room space for a presentation about, um, redeveloping Route Six and Route One Seventy-Seven. And the director of planning reserved the space for it. And it sounded great. Okay, we got it all set up. Everything was cool. And then the night at the event, a consultant that the town had contracted with to develop the plans was the presenter. So technically, that was a violation of the policy because somebody was making billable hours doing this presentation, which I didn't know ahead of time. So technically, that was a breach of the policy. But in the town's best interest, you know, we had a public meeting here to discuss the redevelopment of Route Six, so it's kind of a wash.
Right.
That's why you're given so much discretion.
But that's the thing. By the letter of the law, technically, that was a breach.
But you're, you're a law. I think that's a good thing that you did that.
Yeah.
The town needs to have a start with what they're doing. And we don't have anybody on board that knows the, the rules.
Right. So I think something like that, um, you know, the, there needs to be some wiggle room however we cut it. So that's something like that. I mean, it is in the town's best interest to have that made.
It was a town function too.
Yes, and that's the thing. But then the question, like to get to Sue's point, is drawing that line, you know? For example, the Board of Health had a training for babysitters at the town hall annex that they paid somebody to come in and to do for babysitters so that they would know first aid. Technically, if they had asked us to have that here, because the air conditioning was out at the town hall annex, we would have said no because that would have been a violation of the policy too.
Yeah, so that, that has, I personally, that has to widen a little bit because that would make no sense to have to say no to a bunch of kids learning how to be good babysitters. And yet, if the person who's doing it isn't paid, they're probably not qualified either. So it's kinda like, oh, we'll let the non-qualified, unskilled.
So both of these scenarios involve Westport residents.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, the, the league, we, I think, has to center around Westport somehow. Because I don't think we wanna open it up to anybody coming in. Uh, myself, I don't think, I don't, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna be so restrictive either that we can't.
Well, who, so in that, in that regard, like that instructor most likely wasn't from Westport. Does that matter?
In that case, I don't think so.
No, but it is.
Especially because in that case, that's, you know, a town board is, you know, arranging a training, and the training, trainer is whoever.
Right, right, right.
Apparently for Westporters.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Jeez.
Because that's gonna be a, a mess up there until they get it figured out.
And so to your, to your interest on recreation, um, there, because recreation, um, services are charged, they cannot use this building, or do not.
Correct, currently.
Cannot and do not. So the charge...
But there is something that says a presenter can be paid. So if the people are contributing towards the payment of the speaker, would that be a way around it?
The policy is currently written is they can collect donations to offset the cost of supplies for an event, but not for a personnel cost. So if there is a collection because of a craft that's going on or something like that, that's allowed. But to offset the cost of personnel, like the recreation department does, that is not currently allowed in the policy.
So, but how is that, that personnel different than the instructor? Like, that is an instructor. Say it's a yoga class, say it's a...
It is an instructor, yes, that's...
Right. So that is the same as the babysitter instructor.
Well, that's the question.
Right, so...
I don't think it's quite the same as the town having a consultant coming in to help.
So the way that the policy is currently written, there's three different things that happen. One, you cannot charge admission to use the library space. Two, you cannot make a profit using the library space. Three, you cannot sell anything in the library space.
And that you is?
Anybody using the space.
And the entity using the space, not you, the library.
Yes.
One cannot.
One cannot. They, it, the glorified, I don't know. I got like a nine on a grammar quiz one time, lady. I mean, come on, give me a break.
So in order to, to broaden it a little bit, um, well, first of all, these fees are really high. Would that be the fee, two hundred and fifty dollars to use the space?
Those are numbers, no.
Oh, okay, that's just a number, so.
That's why they're in red.
Yeah.
That's why they're in red.
So there were other libraries throughout Massachusetts that those are the fees.
Yeah.
Those are the starting paces. So the first question is, you know, whether or not to consider other town departments by the same standards that we use for library programming or to consider them as outside nonprofits, under which case we'd have to assess them with the same standard.
Town department.
Town departments, yeah. So whether or not a town-sponsored program or presentation is considered like us or like, uh, any other nonprofit, that's one question.
Here's another question. So this is the Dartmouth one that some, either of you printed out a little ways back. So town departments, boards, and committees, no charge. So the recreation department is a town department?
Yes.
So we're letting them use it. What they do on their, um, budgeting side or their book side, how come, how come we're concerned with that?
It goes back into somewhat making a profit off of using the library space. So the question is whether or not we consider that acceptable or not.
So can we just decide that it is acceptable for Recor, Westport Recreation?
It's up to the Board of Trustees.
Or any, any Westport group?
It would be any Westport group.
Or any Westport group.
Town group anyway, maybe a little more specific, not just any group, but a town group?
Well, then, that's the question, is do you consider town departments versus nonprofits? So right now, the way that our policy currently is, the only group that can charge admission or make money, um, or fundraise off of using the library space is the Friends and the Historical Society. So no other group is allowed to use this space to raise any revenue or to charge any money, um, for admission or for events.
Well, can't we put something like town departments that use this space, do all your financials before coming here or something like that? Like, how can that be worded where that's taken care of under their, in their, in their space? And then this, this is just a space to use.
It depends on, could, well, basically what happened in terms of the recreation department specifically is they were interested in using the meeting room for like a tennis class, um, of, you know, like an actual instructional tennis class, how like talking through things and yada, yada. Um, in which basically they pay an instructor to teach it. So in that case, they would collect the money maybe online, maybe the day of the class, I don't know. Um, I know they encourage people to do it online, so that might not have a direct exchange of money in the room.
Oh, so that would be a way to get around it?
But, um, you know, I don't think that that's really a necessary, you know, that, to me, that's more semantics. And that would make it a little bit harder to, you know, what we'd have to track to see whether or not they collected the money before or the day of.
If you look at it as an instructor or somebody doing something, like somebody said, that instructor's not gonna do it for nothing. So the instructor is charging, but the people pay the instructor.
Well, in that case, the people pay the rec department. The rec department pays the instructor. So it's not a direct from the students to the instructor thing.
Like the woman who sang, um, Rose, Candida Rose, that was lovely. Can I ask this question? Did she get paid?
She did.
Yeah, and how did she get paid?
Um, she got paid by the Friends of the Library, yeah.
At the field or here?
At the field.
Okay, so...
The Friends of the Library are allowed, or they're the exception.
Yeah, they're allowed.
And nobody charged to attend that. It was a free event.
Right.
So typically, I mean, that's one of those things, like, we never charge for any of our programs that we offer. Technically, we could if we needed to. So if we wanted to have like a five dollar suggested donation or something like that at a library event to offset the cost of the crafts or like the pumpkins or something like that, we could. As a rule, we don't.
Now, or we could still?
Well, we always could.
You, the library, not you.
As a policy, I never do and we never have.
Yeah.
It's one of those things. Some libraries, as money gets tight, it's something that there's, you know, it's a wall they can breach. Um, some libraries do charge if you are attending a craft to offset the cost of the craft. You know, ask for a donation of five or ten dollars to cover the, you know, necessaries um, for like a kid's thing or something like that. But then, you know, there are people that might turn away because they can't afford it. So as a rule, we don't. Um, we could if we needed to.
So is the biggest concern with the new, um, room rules, that we wanna change the rules? Or we want to, do we not want to, like, as a general?
I, I think it came to a head because we talked about the recreation department. That's what kinda brought it on.
Yeah.
Could they use it because they're paying somebody in a roundabout way?
Yeah.
So that's...
And we don't do that to anybody else.
Yeah.
And we should revisit policies periodically.
Yeah, I mean, we should. Every year, we should kinda go through all the policies, just be on the safe side.
That's mandated at the credit union.
Yeah.
How did the Historical Society get to be accepted and land trust or watershed or?
So land trust and watershed, I guess apparently what happened is because the library has worked so closely with them for so long, um, it just was one of those things that they were grandfathered in because they had hosted events with us. We had hosted events at the Historical Society. There was a lot of interchange between our archive and their, um, collections that they were just...
We actually have some of their stuff, right? Is some of that stuff there?
As far as I know, it's all ours. Um, but that's one of those things. We do work so closely with them on so many different projects that they were just considered an extension, basically.
But you work closely with the land trust with the backpacks when they started their education center?
Yeah.
So they could, they could make an argument that they should be included too.
It's just one of those things that the way that policy has been written, those are the only two groups that are specifically allowed to do it.
I don't have any problem with anybody using the library. I just wanna make sure we don't open ourselves up to anybody. We don't want, use it, can use it. And however we word that, it doesn't matter.
But if we say it's a town department, doesn't that limit who could take advantage of it?
That's what we have to talk about.
Yeah. And if that was the will of the board, we could definitely do it that way. And then we would, you know, just make sure that it's still, there's some component of me making sure that whatever the individual program is, um, it doesn't take away from the library's mission. For example, if we had, I know in the past, in previous boards, there was a request by the COA to use the meeting room for an art class. You know, something like that, I probably would not encourage because of the chance of damaging the room and the flooring with paint. So we still have to, still make sure it's an acceptable use, um, of the space.
But I guess everything with common, George makes the final call.
Yeah, with an ability to appeal to the board, obviously.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you need to look at your form that they have to fill out to use the space. Maybe we could put something on that form that says if somebody is compensated, how that's compensated so it doesn't fall back on us.
Yeah, and then that goes back to the whether or not to allow it. So I mean, I think, you know, the easiest thing is if we just consider town departments and town boards to have the same, like, one step below. Basically, and if you look at the Dartmouth one, the way that they do it is there's like strata. So the top tier is library programming. And obviously, generally speaking, anything that's a Friends program is also assumed to be a library program because of
Thanks.
affiliation. And then below that is town departments. So if any other town department has a meeting or needs to use the meeting room space, it's basically considered almost the same thing as the library. Um, and then below that is nonprofit use, um, by Westporters. Specifically, that's already in the policy as it's written. And then after that, it would be up to the board to decide whether or not to allow for other nonprofits. And then after that, it would be up to the board to decide whether or not to allow for other nonprofits to use the space and charge. On a, either by a case-by-case basis or by an application kind of thing.
But I think we have to, you know, have the discretion, that you have that discretion to do that. Anything you're not comfortable with, you bring to the board.
Yeah.
Or you feel is questionable.
Town departments, no charge. So to go back to the proposed policy, you had step by step objections or refinements?
Most of the first part of it works and it is a good synthesis of what we already have with some of the other policies we had looked at. The bigger questions come in when we're assessing the fees.
Yes.
Because then it gets into, basically, right now, the three pots of applications that we've declined up to today are one, Recreation Department because of that whole situation with a paid instructor and charging a fee to attend the event and limiting attendance to those who have paid. The second pot, obviously, was the issue we had with second half learning. Same thing, nonprofit, but charging admission and registration to attend. The third one that we've had that we have declined is some people who have had art exhibits up here in the manton room have wanted the ability to sell their collections or to sell, you know, their exhibited pieces. Same thing with people who exhibit in the Ellis case. That's been something that some people have wanted to do. And obviously, we've declined that as well because that would be making profit off of using the library space. So, so right now, the questions are how to deal with those, whether or not we continue to reject it or look at it as a potential pathway for raising funds for the library. So if somebody had an art exhibit, they could sell pieces here in the library if ten percent or some other percentage of the transaction is donated to the library. And we've had multiple exhibitors want to be able to do that. And we've had to turn them down from the offer.
But that could be a significant source of revenue for the library.
It could. And then at that point, we'd have to just sign a promissory note or a memorandum of agreement between ourselves and the exhibitor that they, you know, promise to donate ten percent of any sales to the library. Obviously, it's on the honor system, but that's something that some libraries have done. And that is something that we've been asked, at least whether or not people could exhibit and post prices.
I've seen some pictures, paid these, they have numbers on them.
We made them take it down.
Okay.
They put it up without us noticing because we weren't here when the exhibits were put up. And as soon as it was brought to our attention by another artist who we told they couldn't do that to, phone calls, phone calls were made, believe me. But we had, this happened with the current exhibit in the case right now. There was a couple of pieces from an artist in Dartmouth who was going to be in the case, included in the Native American Heritage display that's in there now, that had wanted to be able to sell her pieces as they were displayed. And we said, you know, if you have them in there, you could have like a phone number. Somebody wanted to contact you for further information, but we can't have prices on things. And then she decided not to put the pieces in there. So it does happen. So that's one. So basically, the three pots of questions are whether or not town departments should or should not be considered differently and allowed to charge admission and to pay somebody to put on an event here at the library. Two, nonprofits, whether or not they can charge. And if they did charge, if they was allowed, would they be charged a fat, flat room rental or asked to pay a percentage of what they take in from using the space? And then three, whether or not if somebody does an exhibition, if that could be allowed as well. Or we could break it up and to do, like the, the art thing, we could do as a separate policy too and have that as like an art exhibition policy to make it easier. Because technically, right now, this is just a policy just for the manton room, which is these two sides.
Okay, good point.
So it's not, that's not included.
You can take it as, you can rent it or you can use it as one.
Correct.
And primarily, you want it to be used because it's in a library? Kind of more as a meeting space or a talking space, softly talking space or, you know, chairs lined up more than activity or no?
Typically. The big problem we have in terms of different uses for the space is just setting it up and breaking it down. Obviously, Westport has a population of a certain age. By average, it's a little bit on the higher side and the tables are not designed for easy transportation and use. So if it's an event that people have to move things around and set them up and break them down themselves, it can be a little difficult. That's why we pretty much have the rooms kind of set up the way they are right now to make that easier as much as we can between the north side and the south side. This side pretty much stays the way that it is unless we need to change it. And then the north side is used for the children's programming, especially since it's right off of the children's room. And also, the tables in there are lighter and more portable, so it's easier to move things around to change it more quickly.
So when are we gonna get lighter tables for this side?
We're working on it.
Is that included in your list of things to the Friends?
Yes, well, kind of. We, basically, right now, this week is my catch-up week for all of the building stuff because we've been, so much of the staff has been sick the last two months. So the plan right now is to rotate the tables. So all of the tables we have in the closet that we don't use except for the book sale, we're gonna be getting rid of. I had a problem with the submission to the town department heads that I have.
I figured that out.
What's that?
I thought we figured that out.
We did. And, but I had, what happened was I have to send a request for consideration to all the other town department heads if any of them want the tables first. And I had a problem with the picture file to send it around. It's a whole thing. So this week, we're gonna do that, make sure that's all taken care of. And then my plan is to rotate these tables into the meeting room closet so that if we need extra heavier tables, these will be those tables. And then we'll get other tables to have set up in here.
Lighter.
Lighter ones. Heavier duty than the ones that the Friends got before because we've already had some problems with those tables. The fixtures on the bottom aren't as strong as I'd like. So we need to find the right table.
What else the high school had in the cafeteria? They must have those fold, like the kind that just fold up?
I haven't been in there.
And just.
Do we have a budget to get the tables you're talking about?
The Friends got some donations, so it depends on, basically, yeah. So basically, I'll just find something and submit it to them for consideration and we've been told that they're supportive. And then the other plan I had was to try to replace the chairs with something that was a little bit more portable and comfortabler. But with everything else we have going on, that might hold off right now.
Do you have a truck like to put all the chairs on?
Just those wheelie platforms. The other thing that I want to get is a storage rack for the tables as well because right now, basically, the tables just stack up side to side in the closet. So getting something like that that we can pull in and push out to store the tables on.
Ultimately, couldn't you do that with chairs, getting folded chairs?
Well, the question that we then get into is storage. So with having just the one closet, with something that is long, I don't think we'd have enough space to store something in there for chairs and for the table, tables, so.
Could almost put them around a little bit of wall?
We could, but then you're getting into the exhibition space. The one time that I had tables out here, and not in the closet because, you remember, to try to get all that sorted and cleaned out, we had an exhibition up and people were literally standing on top of the flat tables to get a closer look at the pieces, which Bonnie was here that day and there was smudged swearing by myself. And I apologized to the staff the next day because the new Bedford came out. Fully met that. But yeah, so in terms of the meeting room space, those are the questions. So the policy questions are whether or not to consider town departments.
I have an idea. Why don't I start over? I like George's thought of taking the art thing exhibition out of the policy because that could be something separate like he talked about. And let's try putting something together for town departments. I really don't want to get into fees. I mean, it's just a mess to keep track of. But let me put something together. I'll get it out to you before the next meeting. We'll go over it again. Maybe it won't be as lengthy.
Okay.
Westport doesn't need to be, these are just things from other libraries. That's all the odds.
I thought it was very good. I mean, it was just, then we get into the fee side of it, then it gets kind of like.
And I'll sit down and go over with you before I put it out.
I wonder if, by looking at what the, just because we're speaking specifically of the rec center, if when you went over what the rec center offers, do they have a number of non-fee classes that they're not bringing in? Or like more specific to what we want to happen in this room, like even a yoga class? I don't know. It's quiet, but.
They, they do do yoga classes. And they do art classes, which might not be appropriate since we don't want any staining or.
All of that would fall into that other category.
The kind of art, like if it was like, you know.
They're doing a watercolor one now.
They do most of that in the gym?
Maybe like anywhere.
They do most of that in the gym?
Or like playing.
A lot of what they do in the gym, yes.
I've heard some people, that people are using the high school now for things too.
I don't know about that.
I don't know. I know there are some, I know there's a couple of groups that meet here, not at the high school because they couldn't afford it.
Everywhere. Here?
Yeah. So.
The high school has public space?
When it's not in use.
But at the fee?
That's what I was told. I have not checked if that's true or not. That's just what I was told by somebody who was using our space for a community group.
When I worked in the Portsmouth School Department, they charged all kind of people to use the space.
Yeah.
Even youth sports had to pay.
I know when I knew Bedford for a while, there was a church that was actually renting out the Keith Middle School on Sundays until they got their own building. And they were paying, you know, I forget what the fee was because you had to pay for the space. You had to pay for the utilities and you had to pay to have a custodian come in. Not in overtime, I think, too. So it wasn't cheap.
Okay, I'll put something together. We'll look at it again. We're not in really a rush, so. Any other topics not anticipated? I just have one question, George. You did put in for the hotspots already, right?
Yes, yeah, we already, that was the last batch.
That's what I was thinking of earlier.
And, oh, yeah, and the COA did donate the five hundred and whatever it was to pay for the service for the three new ones.
Very good.
So we're grateful for that.
Anybody make a motion to a turn? You two have been doing it all night. Same to, second, all in favor?